Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the City of Bettendorf Committee of the Whole Meeting. Today is, excuse me, Tuesday, February 20th, 2024 at 6 o'clock. We did not have a committee of the whole meeting yesterday as our city departments were closed, or many of them anyway, certainly administration for the President's Day holiday. So we are here this evening. We do have an operational item to appear at 7:00 and 8:00 on the regular agenda moving forward this evening. And for that, we welcome Assistant City Attorney Jeff Rider and our City Attorney Chris Curran. Gentlemen, tell us about this excess alley right-of-way.
Yes, good evening, Your Honor, and members of council. Thanks for your time tonight. A fairly docile item on the agenda this evening, but one we wanted to cover to give you a little bit of a scope on what's going on here. So as the IDOT acquired a lot of parcels for the construction of the new I-74 bridge, they go through a vacation process on the back end whenever they no longer need some of those remnant parcels. And tonight, we're going to talk about one of those in question. As part of their disposal process, the city has the opportunity to acquire parcels when they feel it necessary or appropriate for development. In this case, the city does not necessarily have an interest in acquiring this parcel in question. It would be notated here as the yellow box, if you will. That's roughly the parcel that is going to be vacated by the DOT. There is an interested party, however, and we want to assist that party in acquiring that parcel for the sake of a future commercial development downtown. Specifically, this yellow parcel does not have much interest to the developer, but he certainly wants to protect his interest as he looks to develop the parcels to the north and to the east. So what you're looking at here on Grant Street, you'll see the on-ramp up to the new I-74 bridge, just to the west side of this block we're talking about. Parcels 1 through 6 out here are all owned by the same owner. There's a number of different LLCs in which they operate under, but it's all the same owner who has that block under control. And we understand from the Department of Transportation that all of the land south of the alley, with the exception of this small parcel that you see in yellow, will be retained by the Department of Transportation and likely the City of Bettendorf will enter into a maintenance agreement, as we anticipate having a monument sign on the corner in the future. In order for the DOT to work directly with this commercial property owner to the north of the alley, the parcel has to be abutting or contiguous with the parcels that he owns. By virtue of the fact that there's an alley or public right-of-way splitting the middle, if you will, it's not potentially perceived as contiguous or abutting. So they have suggested that we vacate this alley to that property owner, and they would then determine that to be an abutting or contiguous parcel. We have worked with engineering and public works. We have no infrastructure in this alley, and as it is a dead end that will never punch through again, we don't have any need for this in the future. So we are comfortable with the disposal. Counselor Curran and myself also worked with a potential property owner to the south of the alley to gauge their interest in potentially wanting some of the alley segment as well, and they expressed no interest, as the DOT is likely going to retain their land in perpetuity. So the only likely owner of anything south of the alley, north of the alley, is the singular property owner who is going to develop it all commercially. So therefore, we're going to retain an easement for sewer and stormwater if we ever need to, but as it is, we have no use for this alley in the future. So we would dispose of this in our typical fashion, a dollar per square foot, and tonight, that's up for discussion for you all to consider would be that resolution approving the vacation of this alley, so in fact, this parcel and the gold would become abutting or contiguous with the parcels to the north. And with that, Your Honor, I would answer any questions.
Well, I don't have to look to my left this evening, so looking to my right. Gentlemen, any questions for Counselor Curran or Assistant City Administrator Ryder? All right, seeing none. Jager, do you have any questions? Greg?
No, I'm fine, Your Honor.
Okay, so we'll bring that to your attention as items still appear, number 7 and number 8, as we move forward this evening. Let's take a look at Consent I. For that, we welcome our Human Resources Director Kathleen Richland.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor and Council. Currently, the city works with Wellmark for health and prescription coverage and Delta Dental for dental coverage and EBS for vision coverage. Staff has worked with Holmes Murphy, our insurance broker, and conducted a marketplace review of other reinsurance vendors to determine the upcoming reinsurance rates for the city. Out of the vendors that were contacted to submit quotes for the upcoming reinsurance year, based on our plan design and our experience, only six responded out of 12. Through the review, Wellmark was the lowest with an increase of approximately 9.4%. Staff has received a higher increase this past year based on the larger claims experience. It's usually cyclical. We seem to be experiencing that right now. Additional employees that we have hired, which in turn causes additional belly buttons on the plan as well, and we're at approximately 257 employees, 800 bodies that are on the plan. We have appreciated our relationship with the city that has built with Wellmark and Delta Dental and EBS and recommend working with them this upcoming year. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Questions for Kathleen? No questions? Then I'd like to entertain a motion that this remain on tonight's agenda. It's Consent Item I.
Second.
All those in favor? Any opposed? All right, we will take that up on our consent agenda as Item I. Moving forward, any remaining consent agenda items that any particular council member would like to discuss at this time? Mr. Jager?
No, Your Honor, thank you.
Anyone else? All right, anybody have any items to be added? I do not. Come see me tomorrow and we'll see how it goes. Maybe we'll have something to be added by then, by resignation. No, I'm just kidding. All right, let's move into our discussion of the fiscal year 24-25 budget. Finance Director Jason Shad is here, and so is our City Administrator Decker Plain. Gentlemen, you have the floor if you'd like to share some information with us.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Well, Your Honor, this is, we thought we'd just take a couple of minutes to talk about, based on our work session last Saturday, Saturday before, can't remember which one it was.
Saturday before.
Saturday before. We had recommended to you that we consider the firefighter increases to support the SAFER grant over a three-year period with a 12-cent increase each year for three years at 36 cents. And then also added to that additional personnel requests that totaled 10 cents for the other positions. At that time, I was advocating for 22 cents and did not consider doing it all at one time, as that was raised by Councilmember Jager. With that, we thought that you should see the impact of that 46-cent idea, because that idea is kind of resonating certainly with me now, and I think with Jason primarily so that we can guarantee the delivery of the seven firefighters pursuant what we agreed to do when we got the SAFER grant.
Six?
Well, six, we include seven in the budget, Your Honor, but for our purposes, I'm talking about seven now. And we got the grant, and we said that when we applied for the grant, that we would obligate ourselves to the funding of those firefighters ad infinitum. And given the, I would say, uncertainty with the state legislature after Councilmember Jager brought this up, I have no idea what they're going to do to us over the next two seasons that might jeopardize the second 12 and the third 12 cents of that 36 cents that we talked about. So I've become an advocate of considering the 36 cents as a minimum, and I add the dime to that so that it's a 46-cent proposition. I understand the desire of Councilmember Jager was that we would then try to stand down on any levy increase in year two or year three, and I think we would certainly do our best to make that happen. We obviously can't guarantee what comes at us, but I think we understand the proposition as it was placed forward to us in that regard. So we felt that we should at least show you what 46 cents did, because that was not necessarily in the matrix of what we had provided to you on Saturday morning. We showed you the proposition of no increase, the proposition of 12-cent increase, the proposition of a 17-cent increase, and the proposition of a 22-cent increase, which I was advocating for at that time. So we had Jason kind of put together the 46 cent and its impact. We wanted to show you that. We did not necessarily think that you had to come to any conclusion tonight. You certainly might want to have some discussion about that. I think we would like to get to some certainty or some finality by next Monday, or at next Monday's special meeting that we have on the 26th. I think that's when I would like to call the question. I'm not sure we have to make that decision even then, but I think we have to give direction to publish and remember that once we publish, we can always publish high and come in low, but we can't publish low and come in high. Once you make that determination, if, say, 46 cents is the number that you wanted to land on, you can publish 46 and land on 22. You can't publish 22 and come in at 46. So we have to come in with our highest number that we publish.
So with that... It feels to me that with that conversation that we've already had and that seems to be ongoing, it makes really no sense not to publish at 46, so that you then have the opportunity, even if it's a unanimous 22 or something else. You give yourself that option.
Correct.
You certainly may get the pushback at 46, but that might be part of the process that we need to try to determine where we want to land.
Agreed.
Okay.
So Jason, so that was the setup, if you will.
Yeah.
So I wanted Jason to kind of show what he was thinking and what he's been able to generate.
And I have just a couple of slides to add some color to that great summary that Decker just provided.
And you might want to speak up a little bit. Greg's having, I know, some hearing issues in Florida.
Okay. Just as a review, we talked two Saturdays ago about the budget. 118 million across all funds. We believe it demonstrates the city's financial strength and flexibility, responds to those extraordinary decreases in taxable property value due to the rollback and other legislative property tax reductions, and then demonstrates our commitment to public safety by providing funding of those six SAFER grant firefighters when that grant period ends in three years. I think the reason we're talking about a levy rate increase for FY 24-25 is really in response to the slide you see here. Taking together all of these state changes, including the rollback in that legislation, have really reduced the portion of assessed value that is actually taxable. It was 62% just 10 years ago, and now down to just under 51%. I think that alone in FY, from FY 24 to FY 25, will eliminate $393 million of taxable value, equal to 3 million of potential property tax revenue. So I think in...
Without a change in the levy.
Exactly. In any other year, given, you know, a taxable property value of 58 to 62%, we're probably talking about a levy decrease. So this is really a function of that hit to taxable property. So the question is, 46 now or later? As Decker said, we came to you with a proposal, excuse me, of capturing 36 cents over three years, 12 cents each year, and we've added a dime to that to cover a couple of those other positions and other rising costs throughout the budget. So we asked you to consider a budget with a 22-cent increase. The caveat to that is that it requires 12 cents in each of the next two years following. So you will get to 46 cents. The question is just, do we do it now or do we do it later? If we do the three-year buildup, again, we'll do 22 cents this year, 12 in each of the next two. Total levy rate for this year will be 1287, but need to go up again at 12 cents next Impact on that average home that we talked about, valued at about 318,000, is an increase of $14 on property taxes for the full year. This is at the 22-cent level. But as Decker mentioned, this approach does risk the full funding of the firefighters if legislative action would prohibit us from necessary increases in years two and three, and that's kind of where we're hedging. And we are kind of aligning on moving towards this 46-cent scenario. So the all-at-once scenario, we'll take the 46 cents right away in this year. The total levy rate will be 1311, but again, you would get to the 1311 level over the next two years if we went with the other plan as well. Increase on that average home is now $48 for the full year, but I would throw out there that because of the reductions in taxable value on many existing homes, even at this 1311 levy rate level, the plus 46 cents, about 35% of residences will pay less taxes in '24, '25 than they're paying this year. This approach does guarantee the full funding of the firefighters at the end of the SAFER grant. We know we can capture that today, and it will supply some surplus revenue in these first three years where the grant is paying for the firefighters. It would be our suggestion that those funds be diverted to one-time uses, infrastructure projects, equipment purchases, economic development activities, things that do not recur in the budget, so that the funding is there at the end of the grant period for the six and now seven firefighters. Here's what the levy rates might look like. As you go across the page, you'll see FY 23-24, our total levy rate is 1265 in the current year. If we add 22 cents, it's 1287, and you can see how we've sprinkled those throughout the different levy rates. And then 46 cents, we get to the 1311. Just some details on the impact on that average home. In the top section, you'll see the 22-cent scenario. In the bottom table, you'll see the 46-cent scenario, and then the changes due to the rollback, due to valuation. But at the end of the day, you're talking an increase of less than 1% at 22 cents, or just about 2.6%, $48 a year at the 46-cent level. Commercial is a little bit different. They're definitely paying a little bit higher portion of the tax this year than in previous years, but again, 22 cents here at the top, an increase of about $2,300 or 19%. 46 cents is the blue box on the bottom. That takes that level up to about $2,600 or plus 24%. And then I would just remind you, this is a chart you're all very familiar with, our standing in the Quad Cities where property taxes are both residentially and commercially. We stand at the lowest among the Quad Cities and our neighbors. We continue to be a great value when compared to cities of our size and growth patterns across the state in the top eight lowest costs when you add up property taxes, user fees and things of that nature on an average home. And again, you take away our debt levy, and like only at operating, we are a lean operation. If we're only looking at the taxes for operations and fees from utility funds, we are the lowest cost of those 24 cities. So I think we provide an excellent value. I don't think in either levy rate scenario, you'll see a change on these charts drastically one way or another. We are one of just four cities across the state that even has the flexibility to consider a move like this, so I think that's something we should be very happy about. And I think, you know, that perhaps the stars have aligned to take the big swing and move towards the 46-cent increase. I think it protects our flank from legislation that would prevent us from getting those 12-cent increases in year two and three. I think in a year where taxable property value has decreased so much, the impact of a levy rate increase like this is very minimal on a taxpayer and for many, won't be an increase at all. So I just wanted to kind of inform your discussion a little bit more than we did last Saturday when that request was kind of new to us. So we've got, provide some information here, and obviously I'm available to provide answers to any questions you have between now and the time that we make a final decision on the budget. So that is all I have.
Questions for Jason with this new information? Yes, Scott?
Thank you, Your Honor. Maybe Monday night would be a good time to get an answer on what types of, give us some examples perhaps on what some one-time spends might be on some surplus dollars. I mean, certainly, we think engineering and things have to be done for roads. Brian, the reality of how long a CIP project has to get, you know, I just don't know that we probably need a reminder of what types of things that might be.
Right now, you've got 300 projects in the CIP over the next five years totaling $130 million, and we bond about 10, so that's going to get 50.
Right.
So that could be something...
I mean, I think the reality of that needs to be shared so that, you know, not saying that that is what the money would be used for, but it helps frame the decision on, you know, because we, I think collectively, have indicated we don't really want to sit on, you know, several, several thousand, if not millions of dollars of money to just sit. There's a strategy here that...
Absolutely.
We're trying to find the best deal for our taxpayers and for our residents and create options and opportunities for not only perhaps economic development, but aging infrastructure. I know we all drive with pride through our roads, and the lack of potholes is noticed, but there is still some aging infrastructure, and perhaps that could be part of, you know, the bigger picture where it's a better bang for the buck. Thank you, Your Honor.
Yeah, thank you. Good idea. Anybody else? Yeah, Nick?
I think we spent a lot of time, thank you, Your Honor, we spent a lot of time talking about the firefighters. Can you refresh my memory on the other positions that would be included in this as well?
Yep. So there's six firefighters hired through the SAFER grant. That grant period starts here in March and runs for three years. In addition to that, we have recommended the hiring of a...
Fire marshal.
Fire marshal, wow. A fire marshal to take on the development-type work and inspection-type work that's necessary. That would be a part of this funding model. There's also the recommendation for the addition of a parks director, separate from, kind of separating that culture and rec director into two pieces. We have an addition at the library, an outreach coordinator position at the library, and then there's two other positions that are technically already funded in the budget, the replacement of the PIO and some kind of community engagement role, and then a building maintenance technician in public works.
It also included the upgrade of three patrolmen to sergeants. Remember that we've got a very young department now, and the chief's request was to have an additional sergeant on each shift, and there's an upgrade, if you will, for that. It doesn't hire any additional officers, but it makes three patrolmen sergeants, so there would be two sergeants on each shift under lieutenant.
Thank you. I think that helps clarify and, you know, again reassure the residents of our city that not only are the human or the safety perspective, but also there's a considerable amount of additional resources that are going to be offered, you know, to continue to, you know, keep pace with what our residents expect from Bettendorf, right? Parks and everything, so I appreciate the clarification. Thank you.
We've pretty much stood down for the last eight or 10 years while we grew at about 18%, so that's something to keep in mind.
There's a lot happening in our city.
Yeah. Anybody else? Jerry?
Well, thank you, Your Honor. At the same time, we could potentially keep that extra funds in our cash reserve, and right now with interest rates high, we could generate some income from that.
That's another option. We can certainly analyze that.
And then that cash reserve would be there if we needed it, if, you know, for some reason we lost a fire truck, we lost, lost some other vehicles, or something happened. We had a fire and a building burned down.
Clearly, that would be an option as well. Clearly.
And my other comment is, if we only went with 12 cents, that would only guarantee that you would have two firefighters in the future of the six.
If I may, I believe the SAFER grants are all or nothing program when we, you know, the last five years was the council's...
Pull your mic over to yourself, Trey, so Greg can hear you.
Sorry about that, sir. I think the SAFER grant is an all-or-nothing type of FEMA-funded grant. I remember five years ago when the council, you know, direction was to start staffing out at Station 4 for the last five years, and even before that, we'd been applying for the SAFER grant, kind of knowing where we were going to end up. Once again, if we were going to hire the firemen anyway, it's nice to get a $2 million bonus going into that, so if we weren't able to fund them, I think they would go away. The funding from the SAFER grant would go away.
Sure.
Is what I'm saying.
That's correct. Frank?
Thank you, Your Honor. I agree with what Jerry said at the beginning, because I don't think we have any idea what's going on in Des Moines to affect us, and if the commercial affects us 500,000, 700,000, whatever it's going to be, these monies would be there for us to draw on if we had to.
That's correct.
Rather than just go out and put them into projects right now, I'd like to see what's going to happen in Des Moines, because they seem to be full of surprises, and none of them to benefit the cities of the state. So that's my thought process.
Greg, anything?
Yes, Your Honor, very briefly. Jason, do I understand that staff has taken upon itself to put on our webpage an opportunity for an individual property owner to find out what their property taxes are currently and would be under the various scenarios?
Yeah, that's correct. We have a spot on the webpage where if you enter your home's address, you'll learn all kinds of great information about your property, including your garbage day and who your alderman is, but we've added a portion there that will compare your current year property tax bill, an estimate of that bill, and then an estimate of what that property tax bill might look like under these couple of scenarios for next fiscal year. I would just add the caveat that it is a, it's an estimation tool at best. It is not necessarily a completely accurate depiction of what your top property tax bill will look like. There's different credits and different exemptions of property that we can't account for everyone, so it may be slightly different than what you see on your property tax bill, but it should be a very good estimation.
Okay.
Thank you.
Jason, earlier in your presentation, you recognized the changes from the state level and the rollback and how that has affected revenue to the tune of about $3 million this year, difference over last. If we were only to raise the levy just to take care of that $3 million, understanding you also said if we were at that revenue stream, we'd have the opportunity to reduce the levy, but tell me what $3 million on our levy might be?
It'd be a tremendous amount, and I should be clear, it's not $3 million that we were collecting last year that is taken away from us this year. It's the capacity to capture $3 million.
Without a levy rate increase?
Correct, right, that we don't have. So what is that equivalent to in a levy rate?
In about 125 a nickel?
Yeah.
You need 25 nickels? You need a buck and a quarter to a buck and a half?
Right.
Okay.
Yep.
I did the math for tomorrow. I just want to make sure my math meets your math.
Yes.
But maybe now that we've talked about it, I ought to pull that out of the presentation and not really say that. But understandable, and you're talking about 22 or 46.
Yes. Yep.
Other discussion questions? All right. Great.
So, Your Honor, we wanted to just make sure that you understood, that we took the liberty of taking the conversation that you had. We believe that you nodded at us that 22 cents was likely an okay number.
Felt like the discussion was 22 or 46.
Right. And then the 46, we really didn't explore much. The concept came out from Mr. Jager, and we really didn't have the opportunity to understand what that meant to those individual households, but we felt we should at least get that in front of you so that you now have been informed about what that is, and we took the liberty of putting the 22 cent... So you have on the website, you have the current tax rate, the 22 cent consideration, and the 46 cent consideration. We added that there so that any member of the public could now see the three scenarios that you have talked about. Next Monday is the first state-required public meeting that we have to have. It does not, it's not the publication.
Nope.
It's the first public meeting. You could make a direction for us at that point to publish at 46. We believe that that's a smart play, a smart move. Even if you don't come in at that, it seems logical that that would be the recommendation. And then we would have the date for the public hearing at the end of March. So there's time to take input and/or hear from the public if anyone is surprised by it or anyone's not understanding it. Again, I think the most important point that I would like to put at you is, and the chief alluded to it, we committed, when we made the application for the SAFER grant, that if we received that grant, we would fund six firefighters. At the rate that we talked about, we would do that over three years. If that's not available to us, I still believe our obligation exists. And so the more that I've thought about this, the more that I think it's smart to erase that doubt by doing the 46 cents.
Or they just come out of police. You mean, is that easy?
So that for sure, for sure, you have solidified that guarantee that we made to them that we would do this. And tell that part of the town that we have the services we said we were going to have at the end of that grant. So I believe that it makes logical sense why we are considering doing that. But Jason, when would the council, in your mind, have to set that 46 cents? Is that at the 3.5?
The 3.5 is really, prior to that, I have to have all of the state forms kind of filled out and completed and submitted to the Department of Management.
By what day?
On about March 5.
So you need to know.
We need to know before that.
Next week.
But if the direction is just to publish high, that's enough direction for me at that point.
Okay. The decision doesn't have to be made, but next week, we ought to be ready to tell you, publish at this number.
Exactly. That is, that's my point.
And you've got enough flavor on council that's looking at 46. It just makes no sense to me unless everybody by then says 22 is the number. Then why publish at 46 and create any hubbub that you don't need? But if we still have people thinking that, you publish at the 46 and you make your decision.
Correct.
Okay. Okay. Anything else on this topic?
Jeff has something, Your Honor.
Okay, Jeff?
I'm sorry, Your Honor, just a quick clerical item. Councilmember Jager made the notion about having to click a number of times on our website to find the information. It's currently two clicks, and then you type in your address. If it would please counsel, we do have the ability to place it on our homepage. There's a call-out box there that would take you directly to where you could find your property tax information on your specific address. If that would be something council would desire, we can certainly do that very easily.
Okay. I mean, I don't know how many people you're going to have looking for it. If there's 5,000 people looking for it, one-click less might help, but if it's in the right place to be found and two people look, I don't know. I guess we don't know what we don't know. Okay. Okay, well, if that discussion has concluded, then I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn. Second. We stand adjourned. Good work. We will start our meeting.
Jager?
Here.
Nauman?
Here.
Sexer?
Here.
Baden?
Here.
Palczynski?
Here.
Thank you all for being here. Now, if you could all please rise, remove any caps or headdresses you may have, and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be followed by an invocation given by Pastor Richard Picora of All Saints Lutheran Church. Please remain standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pastor.
Your Lord and Heavenly Father, as winter comes to a close and spring approaches, we begin to think of all the good things, the happy things we can do in the months ahead. We think of our gardens and our trips and vacations. And so tonight, here in our council, may we have a good vision of what is ahead of us. May we think of things that will improve our community. May we think of things that will help our residents do better in their daily tasks and lives. We pray all of these things through your name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Rick. Always nice to see you, my friend. Okay. For public requests of council, if there's anybody here who wishes to be heard on an item not already scheduled for public hearing, we'd like to hear from you. Please, when you approach the podium, state your name and address. Refrain from outbursts like clapping or yelling. Be respectful and give us a couple minutes of your thoughts or your request. Is there anybody here who wishes to be heard on public requests of council? All right, we'll close public requests of council. Let's move to our receipt of bids for our Series 202024A bonds. For that, we welcome Christine Hogan, a director with Baker Tilly. Thank you for making the trip, I assume from Minneapolis. Thank you very much for being here. And Jason Schatz. Shat, I've only known you for 30 years. Our finance director. Thank you both for being here.
Thank you, Your Honor. And I will leave all the good news to Chris. Chris Hogan is here from Baker Tilly. They are our financial advisors and assist us in many ways, but one of the biggest ways each year is through our bond sale. And we put that this morning at 10 o'clock after a lot of work prior to, so I'll let Chris take it.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. Again, I'm Chris Hogan from Baker Tilly, municipal advisor to a city. And again, I'm here tonight to present the results of the city's bond sale that happened earlier today. They sold $15,615,000 general obligation bond, Series 2024A. The proceeds to finance was various CIP improvement projects, stormwater improvements, and urban renewal projects related to the middle road, pedestrian, bridge, and trails. I always like to start with just a quick market update. One way of measuring the performance of tax-exempt bonds is the bond buyer index. And that measures the yield in the 20th year for a general obligation bond rated AA2. Looking back over the last four or five years, in 2020 and 2021, we saw all-time low rates at that time, and that was due to the pandemic. Since then, beginning in 2022, there has been 11 rate increases by the feds for a total of 5 and 1/4% rate. So it's been interesting last couple of years for sure. And those rate increases were to help curb inflation. In 2023, we saw a bit of volatility with rates up and down, but pretty much the year ended where it started, and that's kind of where we started in 2024 as well. So part of a bond sale, as everyone knows, is going through a rating process to get the bonds rated. Historically, the city has used Moody's to get their bonds rated. We decided to take a different approach this year. We thought that perhaps looking at using Standard &amp; Poor's switching to them was better suited for the city's methodology to recognize the characteristics specific to the city of Bettendorf and the credit quality of the city. So part of that process, we had, we, I mean, city mostly, hosted two S&amp;P analysts this past summer for a site visit. Participants were the mayor, Decker Plain, Jeff Reader, and Jason Schat. And they put together a fantastic rating presentation. We started the day at the TBK Bank Sports Complex. Where the mayor gave a welcome. We went through a presentation. We toured the sports complex. And then we spent the afternoon touring the city, which was pretty darn awesome. And Jason did a great job showing the analysts all the things going on, new developments, residential, commercial, the bank, the TBK Bank, of course, the bridge. So what resulted from that is S&amp;P gave an indicative rating. At the time, it was AA+. That wasn't published, but we knew that we had a AA+. So when we were going into this bond sale, we decided to, of course, engage S&amp;P. The bonds did receive a AA+. And just to compare, that AA+ is equivalent to a AA1 at Moody's, and the city's at AA2. So essentially, it is upgrade by a notch. So I think that was all positive, positive that we took that approach. So back to today's results. We had, the city had 16 bidders for their bonds, which is probably the highest I've seen. We've had a couple other, unless I go way back, but that is pretty amazing. The winning bidder was Janie Montgomery-Scott, and their lowest, they had the lowest bid at a true interest cost of $3.449. The range between the highest and lowest is $3.449 to $3.554, so very tight with 16 bidders. We estimated, just to give an idea of perspective of where rates are, we had an estimated true interest cost of $3.83 back in December. Last week, we updated the rates and let Jason know our expectation was a $3.42, and it came at $3.449, so really quite close. So given that great sale results, we are recommending the city award the bonds, their general obligation bond, Series 2024A, to Janie Montgomery-Scott with a true interest cost of $3.449. Any questions?
Decker or Jason?
Jason, you might want to talk about the premium.
So the buyer offered a reoffering premium. We expected, back in our December estimate, a premium of about $800,000. You'll recall that the bond buyers will offer a premium in order to collect a little bit higher coupon percentage than the actual interest cost that we end up paying. Through the bidding process, we ended up with a reoffering premium of about $1.6 million, so just about double what we expected. The first $800,000, we had already kind of programmed into our CIP programming. We expected that, and that was part of our bond proceeds to fund the projects. That second $800,000, we had a couple of choices. We could actually reduce the sizing of the bond sale, or we could take the funds and put them into the CIP fund to fund additional projects, or into the debt service fund to fund the debt service on these bonds going forward. So we made the choice to actually take that extra premium. I think we'll probably split it up between the CIP and the debt service fund. If you looked at the debt service schedules and the actual payments, the cash payments the city will have going forward for the life of these bonds are very, very close to what we anticipated. So really no impact on our projections going forward. I think it's a good opportunity to add a little bit of extra cushion into both of those funds. So for that reason, we decided to go ahead and take that extra $800,000.
Decker, did you have something to add?
I would just add, Your Honor, that when we made the decision to have Standard &amp; Poor's look at our rating, we felt for the last couple of years that we deserved an upgrade. We've done all the things that we felt financially the city, for all the awards that we've received over the last 30 years. And then this year, we got the Triple Crown with the additional financial presentation award, and then the budget award and the CAFRA, the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. And based on our pretty conservative cash fund balances, we felt that we were worthy of that, and it proved out. And it's all the work that you do when you're going through the budget, just like we talked about tonight. It's all the work that they do in managing the budget. And obviously, it's all the work that Jason and his team do. And then, of course, Baker Tilly, our finance advisor, and allers are bond counsel. But all that work, which nobody really sees behind the scenes, has brought us to this point with an extremely favorable rate and doing all the projects that we identified in goal-setting and now in the capital budget. So this is the culmination of all of that thought process and all of that work. And we're grateful for everybody who participated and put us in this place, so.
Any questions? Councilmember Jager, do you have any questions?
You're muted, Greg.
I think you said no. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you.
All right. Any questions from council that's here? Thank you for your work. We really appreciate it. Appreciate the presentation, but all the hard work of the folks in finance and our department heads. Thank you all for all you do. Thank you very much for being here and the hard work that Baker Tilly does on our behalf.
And thanks to Jason, Your Honor.
Okay, well, let's move to the resolution. Councilmember Nauman, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. I do have a resolution determining the bid from Janie Montgomery-Scott LLC of Philadelphia, Pennsylvania, to be the best and most favorable bid received and the general obligation bond Series 2024A be awarded at the final par amount as adjusted in the amount of $15,615,000 at a true interest rate of 3.4517% and a total purchase price as adjusted in the amount of $17,215,331.11. I move approval of the resolution.
Second. Any discussion on the resolution? All right, Michelle, would you please call the roll?
Nauman?
Aye.
Sexer?
Aye.
Baden?
Aye.
Palczynski?
Aye.
Jager?
Aye.
Okay, we have unanimously passed that resolution regarding the sale of those bonds. The next item on tonight's agenda is a public hearing with regard to the vacation of the excess alleyway perpendicular to 15th Street and North Grant Street. We had a presentation on this at our committee of the whole meeting, and I assume there are no further questions from council relative to this project since we had our opportunity just a little bit ago? Okay. Michelle, did we publish notice of this public hearing?
Yes, we did, Your Honor, and I do have affidavit of publication.
Did we receive any written correspondence with regard to the same?
No, we did not.
All right, let's open the public hearing with regard to the excess alleyway perpendicular 15th Street. Anybody here wish to be heard on this item? All right, we'll close that public hearing. Let's move to the resolution. Councilmember Baden, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a resolution approving the vacation of excess alleyway right-of-way perpendicular to 15th Street and north of Grant Street and conveyance to the adjoining property owners. I move approval of the resolution.
Second. Any discussion? Okay, Michelle, would you please call the roll?
Nauman?
Aye.
Sexer?
Aye.
Baden?
Aye.
Palczynski?
Aye.
Jager?
Aye.
All right, we have unanimously adopted that resolution. Councilmember Kern can get that working. The next item is a public hearing regarding the Edgewood Drive Reconstruction Project from 19th to 21st Street. And for that, we welcome our Director of Public Works, Brian Schmidt. Brian, tell us about this project, sir.
Thank you, Your Honor. Let me just pull up something real quick. This is a very important project for this neighborhood. It's not only the reconstruction of Edgewood Drive between 19th and 21st Street, but you can see on this map, there is also a significant portion of 21st Street that is going to be reconstructed as well as 19th Street. This is to facilitate not only the reconstruction of the pavement, which is going to be full width, including the driveway approaches and what have you, but this area has no storm sewer in it. And we've seen over time significant issues with drainage through these neighborhoods. So with this project is the addition of storm sewer and that'll traverse all the way from west to east and then south down to, down 19th Street. And then there's a manhole down there at Glenn Court, and then it'll traverse down to the south and east. As I mentioned, all of the driveways will be reconstructed on this project. But, and right now, we are anticipating the bid for this project to take place on February 27th, and then it'll be awarded to the contractor on March 5th here at City Council. We do anticipate on or about April 1st, our construction project to begin. And it will be broken out into three phases. However, before I get into the phasing of this project, I wanted to talk about the water main in this area, too, that Iowa American Water has identified as being strained and needs some repairs due to some, the condition of the pipe, the age of it, and some leaks that have been happening in this area. So that's one of the things that we do with any of our street reconstruction projects. So that's one of the things that we do with any of our street reconstruction projects is that we work with the utility companies such as Mid-American Energy, Iowa American Water and tell them that we're reconstructing a particular project and then ask them if they have an opportunity to remove and replace their assets before we actually reconstruct the street. In this case, Iowa American Water is going to be coming in and doing so. We anticipate Iowa American Water to start their water main project late February, early March in advance of this. They plan on constructing on the west side of 21st Street or east side of 21st Street, all, all along Edgewood and all along 19th Street within these project limits. When they come in and put the water main in, they're, they'll actually install the water main, connect it to the existing water main live by adding valves and then pressurize it. And then, once that water main is live, all of the individual water service taps to the home then would be connected live, like I said, so that there is no water service that will be cut to the residents during the construction period. When this project is constructed, I know that my staff has received some comments from some of the neighbors that are here tonight about how this phasing will go. We anticipate it being phased into three stages, starting with the section on, in pink with 19th Street. We're going to start moving the storm sewer from the south up 19th Street and, and put storm sewer all in the intersection of Edgewood and 19th.
Is that 21st?
The pink, I think, is 21st. The blue looks like 19th, Brian.
Yeah. Excuse me. And then go into the west, all down Edgewood and then putting storm sewer all at the intersection of 21st and Edgewood. Once that's done, they'll come in and start removing all of the pavement. It will be full width. When they do the pink section, it'll be full width. So there is going to be a, a time where the individual property owners will have to have parked their vehicles elsewhere because they will not access their home. We will provide golf courts when necessary due to somebody with age or medical conditions or if it becomes such problematic for the resident, we will provide golf courts, golf carts to assist them in accessing their property. Then we anticipate doing the middle of Edgewood Drive and then that south portion of 21st and then obviously the blue section after that. Questions on garbage? When these, when this project is being constructed, we just asked that the homeowners bring their garbage can to their driveway like they normally do. My staff or the contractor will take it to a collection point to where our solid waste team will then pick it up. We will put a sticker on their can that'll note their address and then it'll get back to the proper home. With that, I'll answer any questions you have.
Questions, yes. Councilmember Saxer.
Thank you, Your Honor. How wide is the right of way on the street?
The right of way is 50 feet and the existing pavement is 27 foot wide.
So will there be any sidewalk work done?
There is not. There is none that exists today.
But I was wondering if you were going to put it in since the right of way is adequate for it.
We are not anticipating putting sidewalk into this neighborhood.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions before our public hearing? Greg, do you have anything? Greg Jager, Councilmember Jager, sorry. I'm looking at Greg as the name. Okay. All right, thank you, Brian. We appreciate your work and updating us and thanks to all who are here to hear about the project. Now we'll start our public hearing. Michelle, did we publish notice of the public hearing?
Yes, we did, Your Honor, and I do have affidavit of publication.
Did we receive any written correspondence at City Hall with regard to the same?
No, we did not.
Okay, let's open the public hearing with regard to the Edgewood Drive Reconstruction Project. Anyone here wish to be heard on this item? You can be heard by approaching the podium in the back. Please state your name and your address. We'd like to hear from you. Anyone want to be heard or maybe you're just listening for the description? Okay. If you would like to be heard, why don't you start making your way back to the podium? Please state your name and your address before you start speaking. We'd love to hear from you.
My name is Doug McDonald. I'm at 1915 Edgewood Drive. I guess the only question that I really had was concerning the water main project. The water main is currently underneath the northerly side of Edgewood. So when the water company comes in to tear that out, they're going to have to remove pavement at that time. Is that correct?
They're actually going to be installing the water main on the south side.
Okay. So, but they're going to have the street disrupted at the time that they're, are they doing it outside of the street?
Yeah, it's outside of the pavement limits. It'll be on the south side within the, you know, about maybe five feet behind the curb.
Gotcha. Okay. All right. Nope, that's, that's.
But then, one of the things too, though, is when they, they're going to be doing an open cut with that project, so.
Right.
When they open it up, they're going to be cutting a, a small section of the driveway out to install the water main. And then as soon as they're done, they will rock it. So then you'll have access in it to facilitate the staging that we, that I just showed you tonight.
Okay.
But it will be rocked temporarily.
Okay. All right. Okay, that's the only question I have.
Thank you, sir.
Mercy Haynes, 2015 Edgewood Drive. Question I have is about emergency vehicles being able to come through. Did you say the, the, it's going to be, they're working on both sides of the street at the same time?
That is correct.
So is there going to be a problem if there is an emergency, ambulances, that type of thing? Will there be access for those?
Yeah, well, that's why it's being phased the way it is. And then obviously, when it's awarded to the contractor, we will sit down with them and sometimes they have different ideas on how to stage it, but we've done this for quite a while. We feel that this is the best staging for this particular project, given the, the width of the neighborhood, the streets in the neighborhood and whatnot. But obviously, when they start removing the pavement first, they will rock right behind it so that it will allow access in and out. Now, you will not have access to your home, but we will have access for vehicles to, to move back and forth through the, through the project.
Okay. That's fine. Thank you.
Shirley Richland, 1934 Edgewood. My question is, is there going to be someplace designated for us to park or we just have to find something?
No, there will be a designated spot. Once we get the contract awarded, we will sit down with them. And in the letter that you guys received back on, I mean, it was mailed on February 14th, but it did note that more, another information letter with some of the information that I provided tonight, it'll be in clear detail about where to park, about your garbage service and things like that, who to contact, as well as not only from the city, but from the contractor themselves, just in case if there's an issue with that's, that's happening with the project while it's being constructed.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to be heard? Okay, let's close that public hearing on the Edgewood Drive Reconstruction Project. Councilmember Saxer, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a resolution approving the plans, specification and form of contract for the Edgewood Drive Reconstruction Project from 19th Street to 21st Street. I move approval of the resolution.
Second. We have a motion and a second, a discussion on this item from council. Yes, Councilmember Saxer.
Thank you, Your Honor. I do have two more questions as a result of the public comments. For the parking area, will we provide a little bit extra police protection since, you know, we've had problems throughout the city, once in a while with break-in of cars? You know, now that these cars are going to be away from the, from the home.
Can I add something real quick before she does? I'm sorry. So when we have a staging area for a construction project, we'll have a barricaded section where they'll actually park to denote that it's, you know, parking just for those homeowners only during the construction phase. And then obviously, the police department will be aware of that as well, knowing where those residents, residents are parking their vehicles, given the different stagings of the project.
And to your point, we can make our officers aware, to his point, of what's going on. I would just say that as long as your vehicles are locked up and you have nothing in plain view, you are at very low risk. The only time cars generally get entered is when they're unlocked and when there's items of value in plain view. If you can eliminate those two opportunities, no items of value in plain view and lock a car, you're, you're much, much lower risk and a likelihood is that they aren't going to mess with your car.
Thanks.
Thank you, Steph. Further discussion? All right, hearing none. Michelle, would you please call the roll?
Nauman?
Aye.
Saxer?
Aye.
Baden?
Aye.
Palczynski?
Aye.
Jager?
Aye.
We have unanimously approved the Edgewood Drive Reconstruction Project. We move to another public hearing. Brian, would you just give us a quick rundown of the full depth patching program? I know council's well aware of that. It comes up every year in budget.
And one of the things, too, that's important to point out this and I.
Go to pull your mic a little closer, sorry.
Sorry about that. Thank you, Your Honor. This is just removing and replacing concrete patches within our concrete pavement, but it's, it's important to note, though, too, that we do have a little bit of contingency built into this project. So when the staff actually is out potholing patch, or potholing just after the winter months and whatnot, there are certain pavement areas that have popped up. So when, when they're out potholing, they also note those particular areas that are larger than normal, like a, just a crack in the pavement. So those patches will be added in there that we've identified over the winter months.
Perfect, thank you. Questions for Brian? Michelle, did we publish notice of this public hearing?
Yes, we did, Your Honor, and I do have affidavit of publication.
Did we receive any written correspondence with regard to the same?
No, we did not.
All right, let's open the public hearing with regard to our full depth patching program. Anybody here wish to be heard on this item? All right, let's close that public hearing and move to the resolution. Councilmember Palczynski, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a resolution approving the plans, specification and form of contract for the 2024 Full Depth Patching Program. I move approval of the resolution.
Second.
Any discussion here? Michelle, please, call the roll.
Nauman?
Aye.
Saxer?
Aye.
Baden?
Aye.
Palczynski?
Aye.
Jager?
Aye.
All right, we have unanimously passed the full depth patching program for 2024. We have a public hearing with regard to the 33rd Street Drainage Improvements. Brian, would you like to tell us about those improvements, at least in a general form?
Thank you, Your Honor. This is removing and, or excuse me, reconstructing approximately 1,500 feet of ditch, adding grading or adding storm sewer, doing some grading through this project. It's important to note that this project is entirely funded through the Iowa Department of Homeland Security Mitigation Grant, so there is no obligation to the city for this particular project.
Thank you, sir.
Your Honor, if we recall, this was a request by Civil Steel about eight years ago. And we finally got the federal grant for this before the fire, but we're still going to proceed with the project because it's good for the area. This will eliminate a whole lot of storm sewer activity to that site.
There you have it. Unfortunate for Civil Steel. Okay, Michelle, did we publish notice of this public hearing?
Yes, we did, Your Honor, and I do have affidavit of publication.
Did we receive any written correspondence with regard to the same?
No, we did not.
Let's open the public hearing for the 33, 33rd Street Drainage Improvements. Anybody here wish to be heard on this item? I will close that public hearing and move to the resolution. Councilmember Saxer, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a resolution approving the plans, specification and form of contract for the 33rd Street Drainage Improvements. I move approval of the resolution.
Second.
Any discussion here? Michelle, please, call the roll.
Nauman?
Aye.
Saxer?
Aye.
Baden?
Aye.
Palczynski?
Aye.
Jager?
Aye.
All right. That resolution unanimously passed. We move to another public hearing. This is with regard to 4255 Middle Road, the Blum residence. And there's a request for some rezoning. Mr. Hunt, do you have a quick rundown for us?
Sure, Your Honor. I think we've talked about this one before, but it is a, a couple parcels to accommodate basically single-family homes near an existing single-family home that's on 15 acres.
Correct.
So about two and a half acres reserved for two more single-family homes subdivided out, rezoned to R2, which is consistent with the neighborhood. And then there's one outlot because there's some floodway that needs to be exempted from development. So a pretty small subdivision.
Any questions for Mark before we open the public hearing? Okay, Michelle, did we publish notice of this public hearing?
Yes, we did, Your Honor, and I do have affidavit of publication.
Did we receive any written correspondence with regard to the same?
No, we did not.
Let's open the public hearing on the 4255 Middle Road project for two houses. Anybody here wish to be heard on this item? And I don't see the Blums. Okay, we'll close the public hearing and move to the resident, excuse me, the ordinance for Councilmember Palczynski.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have the first reading of an ordinance amending the Bettendorf Iowa Zone Map for property generally located at 4255 Middle Road, A1 Agricultural Urban Reserve District to R2 Single Family Residential District. I move approval of the ordinance at its first reading.
Second.
Any discussion here? All right, Michelle, would you please call the roll?
Nauman?
Aye.
Saxer?
Aye.
Baden?
Aye.
Palczynski?
Aye.
Jager?
Aye.
All right, our first reading has unanimously passed. Craig and the kids will be happy. We move to another public hearing. This is with regard to a zoning change on Kimberly Road. Requested by Kevin Kellner and Mr. Kellner is here. Thank you for being here, Kevin. Mr. Hunt, please.
Yeah, this is the former Hobby Lobby site that, as we all know, has sat empty for, for many years. It has a new use. To accommodate that use, we do need to upgrade it to a C3 zoning, which is actually fairly consistent with the large shopping center just south of it. The whole acreage, the whole roughly 12 acres would go from C2 to C3. And that would include the existing, there was a financial institution, a former bank as part of the lot, that would be an allowable use for the bank. So we're consistent with all the existing users and we're accommodating a new use for a building that we're really happy to see have tenants finally.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for Mr. Hunt? Yes. Councilmember Palczynski.
Yeah, just for clarification, this would allow for additional development on the frontage of that road as well, right? Pretty big parcel with 12 acres there.
With a 12-acre parcel, it's, it's more than plentifully parked, so I suppose, I suppose somebody could get subdivided again and fit another user on there.
On the front, okay. Thank you.
Further questions for Mark before we open our public hearing? Okay, Michelle, did we publish notice of this public hearing?
Yes, we did, Your Honor, and I do have affidavit of publication.
Did we receive any written correspondence with regard to the same?
No, we did not.
All right, let's open the public hearing with regard to the Kimberly Road project at the old Hobby Lobby site. Anybody here wish to be heard on this item? All right, seeing no movement, we'll close that public hearing and move to the ordinance. Councilmember Palczynski, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have the first reading of an ordinance amending the Bettendorf Iowa Zone Map for properly, property generally located at 1975 2119 and 2121 Kimberly Road, C2 Community Commercial District to C3 General Business District. I move approval of the ordinance at its first reading.
Second.
Any discussion here? Michelle, please, call the roll.
Nauman?
Aye.
Saxer?
Aye.
Baden?
Aye.
Palczynski?
Aye.
Jager?
Aye.
All right, we have unanimously approved the first reading, Mr. Kellner. Thank you very much. All right, we move to a first reading of another ordinance. This is for Councilmember Baden, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a first reading of an ordinance adjusting the rates for stormwater utility, sewer I have a first reading of an ordinance adjusting the rates for stormwater utility, sewer utility, and solid waste enterprise activities for the city. I move approval of the ordinance at the first reading.
Second. Any discussion here? Obviously, we've been working on this through the budget process, through goal setting. No surprise. Michelle, please, call the roll.
Nauman?
Aye.
Saxer?
Aye.
Baden?
Aye.
Palczynski?
Aye.
Jager?
Aye.
All right, we have unanimously passed the first reading. We move to a trio of third and final readings. The first, Councilmember Baden.[1655.24]